It's six o'clock now, so good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Tatro. I am the Chair of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome to the Thursday, August 21st, 2025, 6:00 PM edition of the Auburn Zoning Board. I am calling this meeting to order. We have a 6:00 PM applicant this evening, Mr. Terso Tavares, and I apologize if I said that incorrectly, requesting a special permit under Section 3.9.1.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a home occupation at 46 Harson Avenue, Auburn, Mass., MAP 33, parcel 55. Is the applicant present? Sir, if you could approach the lectern to the microphone over there and give us an overview of what you'd like to accomplish. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to open the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none? Do we have any butters here this evening, just for the folks at home? We are the only people here tonight, which is unique in itself. So we do not have any butters here this evening to discuss about this, so to you, sir.
Okay, yes, my name is Anatoli Terso, Anatoli Tavares, and I have a small business, invertedy, and for invertedy teachers, towels, heat press, like screen printing. It's a family business, just me and my wife and my little baby, so. Yeah, we just receive some persons, depends on appointments, when they want to drop something. I used to order from my house, from some providers, so I receive the merchandise, that usually is hats or sweatchairs, polishers, and that kind of stuff. And that's basically what we do. We, I have like a small business, inverted machine, one head is like these sites and a heat press. That's the only thing that we have.
Okay. Are you wearing some of your at-work tonight?
That's made by me.
Nice, good one, I wanted to make sure. I got to give you the shout-out while you were here, at least. Okay, so we have nobody in the audience, I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair Maron, to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thanks for being here. Are you planning any signage outside the home for the business?
Probably yes, I want to do something, but like that I can move, especially when winter. But probably it's a small sign, like this plastic sign that they, that usually can be put, I can probably attach to the.
So you're thinking something portable in the future?
Yeah, exactly.
You don't have a design now, okay.
Exactly, exactly.
What hours will you be open, hours of operation?
Usually by appointment, but it's between like 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM usually. I used to receive in between that hour.
And I did read the brief, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions at this time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Kossi, sir?
Yes, how about your materials? Do they get delivered, or do you pick up your materials?
From, usually the, what I order, if I have an order for a client, I order from Alpha Brothers or SAS, they just located here in Massachusetts, so they deliver it to my homes. Usually UPS or, but it's like boxes, not big, because it's a small business, I don't receive like big orders from.
How often do they come, are they, is it like every day?
Oh, no, 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 definitely not, it's depend on orders that I've received, but unfortunately, I don't receive all of them every day. I wish, I wish to receive. If that the case, I probably gonna move to a local.
Right, and you're gonna have a dumpster or anything?
No, 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 because the only, the only material that can be, you know, is the, what is the name? Forget, sorry, because my English is not very good looking. The backing that we used to put in the, in the birdie, on the back.
Yep, yep.
That's the only thing, and it's cut it, and we, I used to put in, in the back, it's not like big bag, it's small.
So I happen to know, again, a little bit about this stuff, what he's saying is, there's a backing that you use, so when you put a shirt, let's say, into a machine, you slide a piece of like a material there, it keeps the shirt flat, it also helps maintain the thread contact in the shirt, kind of tightens everything up. And what they do is they just trim the inside of it off, the excess.
Yeah, they call it sterilizing.
And the rest of it stays in there, right?
Yeah, this is a kind of fabric, it's simple, it's not like.
Almost, pretty much.
I have no further questions.
Ms. Bush?
How many customers do you, do you have them come every day, or is it just kind of?
I can say that can every day, usually by appointment, and you know, as all business, we have like down, like not much clients, some months, other can be more client, but usually by appointment, especially because my wife don't speak English, too much English, so I have to receive, and this is a secondary job for me, so I don't receive like a bunch of clients.
Okay.
I can say probably 10 clients per month, or something like that.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had.
Usually my client, I used to send my orders to the client, because I come from Boston. I have the business in Boston before, and I have a lot of client in Boston, and I send, they still ordering from me, and I send back to them, so they don't have to come to my house.
So this is more like an order online, or order over the internet type of thing, and then ship it to them when it's done, type of deal?
Usually, yeah, mostly, because as now, you know, people locate me by Google Maps, so they, they try to reach out, and some, looks like there are no too much business, kind of business of this around, so people usually get the services, but usually they, they call me, they like order from, from, I send all the information by text, and usually they order around, and they just came to pick it up, or just drop and pick it up later.
Okay.
No, I mean, I think we've covered it, I don't think it's going to be a ridiculous amount of traffic in the neighborhood, you know, a few people picking up here and there, I don't think that that's really an issue.
People usually to park in my driveway as well, so.
Yeah, that was one question I was gonna ask, is there room in your driveway if a customer comes? Is there a room in the driveway for the customer to park, so they're not on the street? Okay.
And honestly, that's where, I like the idea of the small mobile sign, because if somebody is picking up, and they're not familiar with the neighborhood, you go out there, you put your sign, that they gone, you go and you put it away after that, kind of makes it more efficient, you don't bump into the neighbor's house by mistake. So, yeah, okay, if anybody else, again, we don't have any butters present in order of the concerns, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have any discussion on the 6:00 PM applicant, Terso Tavares, requesting a special permit under Section 3.9.1.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a home occupation at 46 Harson Ave., Auburn, Mass., MAP 33, parcel 55?
No discussion, Mr. Chairman, I'd be prepared to make a motion and approve with standard conditions.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none? Congratulations, sir, good luck, I hope it goes well for you.
Thank you.
And let's hope you get maybe just a little bit of advertising just off of this hearing here, so.
Yeah, hope to my business, you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Do we have any municipal clients? I'm not posturing for Auburn either, I'm just asking, do you have any municipal clients?
How many?
Like towns, cities or towns, or anything like that?
From, from?
Yeah, like from, no, I receive more right now from.
Oh, that Boston area.
Yeah, Worcester, I'm interested in for Worcester.
Sure, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I'm just asking, okay.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to close the 6:00 PM hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close.
Be appealed or no?
The what?
Appeal.
Yeah, we're gonna get to the closing.
Oh, this hearing, sorry.
Just the hearing.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, so the motion to close the 6:00 PM hearing.
Motion to close.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so decisions, I think you said we were gonna be meeting on the decisions from the, we're gonna.
No, we have one decision to sign tonight.
Okay.
That's for 861, 879, 871, 873, South Ridge and 16 Hill, the proposed new car wash.
Correct. Excellent. So we have to sign these decisions, and then we have minutes for 6:26, 25?
You know, I have minutes tonight, no, I have a great minutes for 6:26 and 7:17. I'll put them in the packets for the next meeting.
Excellent, thank you so much. Okay, so what we really have some discussion for this evening is under new business here. So we have some 40B issues going on in town that I think some people need to be aware of. And one of them is from the top, is there is a potential to have two separate projects going on at the same time. There is a potential to have both Athens Street and Wallace Ave. before the zoning board within the next few months. So myself and the town side, if you will, had a discussion, and we thought the only true sort of fair and equitable way to make sure that everyone gets their fair attention would be to try to see if the board would be willing to schedule two meetings, should that take place. We could simply do it as a first and the third Thursday of the month, keeping the scheduled meeting that we have now. As long as we, we could also decide if we wanted to schedule them a different manner, if that was the choice. As long as we kept them at least two weeks apart, though, that would be the key, because they have to have ample time to advertise each meeting. So we're just here, it's open discussion, so I'll just give you each one at a time, whatever your thoughts are, and Mr. Maron, you, sir?
Given the volume and what we know, how consuming a 40B application is, I wouldn't be opposed to a second meeting a month. The only caveat for me selfishly is, is that I think one of those meetings is completely dedicated to the 40B applicant, so that we can take care of other residents and other applications secondarily in one of the other meetings, so it doesn't get jammed up.
So what we also thought, that was another great point, and actually, we just discussed this a few minutes ago, what we would do is, even if we kept it, so let's just hypothetically say it was the first and third Thursdays of the month, we would still put the 40B applicant as the last agenda item each time. So even if somebody came in and they wanted a shed, or a pool, or an addition on the house, they would be heard first, and then the 40B hearing would be held at the end of that, whatever the case may be, whatever number there was in front of them.
Okay, so we would, we would make both meetings available for other applicants?
Well, again, that was.
I think the idea is to not do both 40Bs in the same night, because there's just two, so purposely keeping whoever was on the first Thursday, first of the Thursday, would always be on the first Thursday, and if somebody else applied and they wanted, but it'd be more likely that the first hearing of the month would just be dedicated to a 40B, and then the second meeting of the month, our regular meeting, would be any other applicants. I'm sure, obviously, if we're holding two meetings and somebody came and they want to do a shed, or whatever the case may be, and they can get on the first meeting for the month, I don't see why we wouldn't, but, but I think, you know, some of those 40Bs go two, three hours, and to have two in the same night, that would, otherwise, then we'll just keep them on the same, but I think the idea was to keep them separated so that we'd only be dealing with one at a time, and like Bob said, keep them as the last meeting. So I mean, I know we, you know, we had someone here, I remember, the woman with the young child, who literally sat here until 10:45 at night, because her neighbor wanted to encroach like a foot with his bulkhead. And I mean, that's just awful for her to have to sit here through that whole thing.
And also, the reason, and again, this is all complete, open for discussion, and however the board would like to see it run, but the reason I had suggested to keep both meetings open to the public would be just because if we're here, why not give somebody the opportunity to have a second opportunity for a hearing in a month, if we can benefit the homeowners in some way, if they want to put additions on, or, especially now, when they're talking about the buy right in-law apartments, right, the accessory dwelling units and things like that. So it's kind of getting to that time of year where we might start seeing some local individual home construction close to the fall, you know, we are hitting that time.
Yeah, and I'm not opposed to it, I think it's a good strategy, by and large, and the fact that the concession is, is that the 40B applicant would be last on the agenda to give other residents a chance to go up front. Categorically, I think that's a great practice. I think that it would be nightmarish, you had mentioned, I mean, it would be nightmarish to take two separate property 40Bs in a same night, because of what that application looks like.
Especially with other people, too, right? I mean, it's one thing if it falls where we didn't have it, and it's quick, but you know, you get three or four other hearings and people.
No. No, please isn't even speaking this.
And mix it with that.
We can all meet over the air, how's that?
With public, with butters.
Yeah, we probably can't even fit them all in the room, actually. The only consideration that I, you know, thought of when, when I talked about this with Bob earlier is that, you know, we did run into the problem on Perry Place where you can only miss one meeting. So that also makes it something to think about, is that, you know, we all have lives, we all have things. I know for sure I'm traveling for work both in October and November, which means I'm absolutely gonna miss a meeting, so then.
Well, as long as you miss one, we can't miss two, that's all.
You miss another one.
One per, one per.
Yeah.
One per here, right, right, right. So, you know, that's just another consideration for us as the board, is that, you know, we, we have to be careful about.
We don't have to make a decision tonight either, we're more, I just.
They're not on the agenda yet.
You know, yeah, and they haven't even, we don't even have formal applications in front of the ZBA yet. However, it's, we see them on the horizon, they're coming. Whether or not they come at the same time, I don't really know yet, but.
Are they on the, is anybody on the agenda for the next meeting that we know of? But they still have time to get on for the next meeting, yeah.
The one on Athens, I think is, seems a little bit postponed, just because of the fact that they know that they're gonna need a second means of egress from that site. The fire department's very adamant about it, and so is the building department.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so it could be some time, it's not gonna be right the second, but I think something that.
It certainly is on the horizon, and we should at least get it out there, it's a possibility, right?
Yeah, and it might spread out the applicants, the other applicants, too, you know what I mean?
Agreed, right, one guy, one or one.
So we can get to the 40B quicker.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good strategy based on, on, you know, the meeting frequency and cadence.
And you think wait to, I think, or I think, like wait to do it until we do have two? Because it does sound like, I mean, it could be five months before Athens is before us, and if Wallace gets on before that, and we can do it just with our regular meetings, and by the time Athens gets on, we could be done with, like, we honestly, we don't know if that's gonna happen, so I think we wait until we absolutely do have two on the agenda, I mean, it could be winter before that.
Yeah, it could be February before we actually have a second meeting.
Which, you know, maybe in the end, we, we won't, we won't need it, but just to talk about it.
What do you think?
Oh, I think you're all raising the points that I had thought of. Will we get double the pay, though?
Yeah. Will our salaries double? Yes, salary doubled, doubling the salary, Ms. Bush.
And vacation time.
Definitely will.
Sick time. Okay, but right now, we have nothing, either.
And it could, it could turn out that we don't have it, but I just want to make you all aware of it, and it's certainly a possibility, especially considering that we don't have alternates chosen yet. We did receive two applications.
Well, it's gonna be coming, but it's not gonna be friendly.
Several months, so they're hoping to get more application, they have like a pool to select from. But what I can say, speaking on that really quickly before we move on, is, again, if anybody wants to join the ZBA as an alternate, we'd love to have you.
Get it worked out.
We're looking for like a law school student possibly, or maybe a retired attorney, somebody that might have done this in the past, maybe with some real estate experience, or some, some engineering experience possibly, but again, we'll welcome to try to see anybody that wants to come in and get, and volunteer. What we would ask, however, is, if you do apply, it is just a simple form on the website, or you know, you can put it in and say, I'd like to be interested, but if you can include a paragraph of why you would like to be chosen to be on the board, that would be helpful, just to kind of give us a little introductory. It's kind of hard to get the, you know, the, the person on paper when you only have name, address, and that they're interested, you know, so if they could include a paragraph of your intent, that would be kind of helpful. The other thing we have is, we did, Ms. Roach and I attend the Athens Street walkthrough this past week, and I think, honestly, I'll just defer to you, do you want to discuss it first, or?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there was a lot, obviously, there was a lot of butters. We also both, right, yeah, we went to the meeting that they had here for the question and answer period. I felt there was a lot of familiar faces, a lot of the people who came to that meeting were people who live in the neighborhood, and people who came to see the walkthrough part of it. There was obviously a lot of concern about the water. I think, and Tom had just brought in that map where we looked, there's, there's a considerable, like little river. Yeah, there's wetlands, there's like a little brook that runs through that gets, you know, pretty full, so I'd say that was a pretty big concern.
I think there's actually three, three consistent brooks when that gets.
Yeah, when it gets wet.
With rain up there, yeah.
And I think the Chief Coleman was very clear in his thoughts that there should be a second method of egress out of that development. I believe his words were, that's a hill that I will die on, was his direct quote, you know, from a safety perspective, wanting to make sure there was some other.
There was no second means even.
I think the residents felt like Athens Street should be the least used, if that's the right word, say, entrance and exit, that's a very narrow street. And I can certainly say that when we were there, all a lot of us, you guys were all there, and the cars were parked on both sides of the road, and you almost can't even drive a car down the road when cars are parked. Everybody who came was parked on the side of the street, so it was very tight over there. I think there was also some concern from Mr., is it Bugsby, is that his name?
Busby.
Busby, the guy from the state, does exist, by the way, we saw him in person. And he felt like the way the buildings were set up, there's almost like one building here, and then two very close together here, which is very close to the back of those neighbors on Athens. It seemed like he felt like they should shift it and, and not make one of the buildings so tight up to the neighbors. Obviously, the neighbors shared that concern, but it seemed like the state even had that, or at least he had that concern. He mentioned that, he mentioned finding a way to shift them a little bit differently. And I think the applicant understands, or I would hope that they do after that meeting, that we, I think that the plan that was originally submitted is probably not the one that we're going to end up seeing.
It certainly is, looks that way, hopefully.
I mean, hopefully, I guess.
Coming on the conversation at the state level, and again, these are conversations that will take place at the state level, they are not a part of our.
Right, we have no, right, we don't know what's gonna come to us, but there was some concerns with the plans from both the water perspective and egress perspective, and just sort of it seemed to be like location of the buildings. They are four stories, so we're back to the same four-story conversation, they'll need those same waivers that we talked about on Perry Place. Same, they're a mix of, I think they're required to do 10, if I recall, they're required to do 10% three bedrooms. So there's, if it's 100.
I'm gonna pray, I hope you'll remove those buildings.
It's like 190, so like 19 bedrooms, then it's like 20, 30% bedrooms, 30% one, however that shakes down. Somebody asked that question, so they gave us kind of the breakdown of those. But it did seem like there was some, from a building, building department perspective and fire department perspective, they, they really wanted to see a second method of egress.
Well, and even as, she's like, not a second means egress, the primary means of.
Primary means, yeah, being on Prospect Street.
And then have an Athens be the secondary, right?
Yes, right.
So what we kind of envisioned, if you, if you, like, for the folks following along at home, we're talking about like Athens Street would be used as the, sort of the backup entryway like we have designed at the backside of Papas Field off of Carter Street, where they have it there, it's built, but there's a big, you know, you know, you have to unlock it.
It's like fence, oh, yeah, yeah.
Go through, you know, it's, it's a safety gate where police, fire, and emergency could use. Otherwise, it wouldn't be a primary source of egress, as they said. The issue that I also added to that conversation was, if you look at the intersection of Appleton Road and Route 20, it's much smaller than the Prospect Street intersection. There is no left and right turn arrows, if you're trying to take across, you know, if you're trying to cut across Route 20, to take a left and go up that hill to Appleton, they already don't have, you know, that, so that whole intersection had to be rebuilt, they don't have a left turn arrow there. The other concern I have is, people are gonna walk, I can't, you can't restrict people from being pedestrians, and coming from Walmart up that hill, there's a bend in the road that requires you to accelerate coming up the hill, and right where you hit Hertz and Appleton is where it levels out, and people driving up that street at a rate of speed to get up the hill are gonna be very hard pressed to put their brakes on at the very last second if somebody steps off that curb, especially considering for this time of year, we're blind on Route 20. If you really think about it, like if you drive Route 20 right now at this time of day, you're squinting and looking for your sunglasses. And from January to April, then in turn, that particular corner is really black, it's very, very dark down there. So for somebody to come up, especially I've, I've driven home where it's been pouring rain, sleet, snow, you know, one of those dark and stormy nights, and it's, that's a very, very difficult corner to see on.
Prospect intersection is way clearer.
Yeah, much better.
It's still, when I get a green light there, I still look both ways before I go, because people absolutely blow that light. The fire station, obviously, is there now, you know, with the fire station going in there.
We're also concerned.
But that's a much better intersection.
Going in there, they would probably be able to improve that intersection substantially to include pedestrian, safe pedestrian traffic, you know, it could, we actually even mentioned the possibility of a rotary there, where the fire department can control all the lights on it. Again, these are all hypotheticals down the road, but we just, we did express, we want the folks at home to know that we voiced our concerns after that meeting, the state has heard those concerns, the town is gonna put together a package of response, if they haven't already, I just haven't had the chance to speak to them, but all of the concerns that they collected were going as a formal response to the state.
Once again, terrible spot for the 40B project at this magnitude, it's just crazy.
Thank you.
And then nobody disagrees.
Yeah, that intersection is awful.
Thank you for the recap.
The major flood that was in the paper when it totally flooded through the chair. We have, I have a video from Nancy Giagre, one of the neighbors, that she took of the river going down, where they have to do the crossing if they came from Athens, and that's where the flooding was actually, right at the bottom of that by Herb Chambers, where it got low. So like, you know, there's a lot of water that goes down there.
That's a good segue to one of my comments, thank you, Tom. The, I really appreciate the recap and the detail for it, because I was trying to get there, and I wasn't, I'll be blunt, I wasn't happy that it was literally smack in the middle of my day. You know, why, why this wasn't able to be pushed at a time when the rest of us are conducting business, so more people could go. But given that this is still with the state, do we know if this particular project on Athens has already been given the feasibility check?
It has not.
No, not even, not even close.
Thank you, and the reason why I bring that up is because, I mean, I think all of the points that you raise are fantastic points, but much like what we faced in the last one, and there's no comparison, but, I mean, this lot has water, constant water, and how they can get beyond conservation, and, I mean, you can't, I don't know how they dam that up. So I'm just wondering if, if the state has weighed in on that yet? On just the water and the conservation piece?
Well, they're, they're gonna weigh in, you know, being a contractor, and they've done a lot of that kind of work, it's amazing what these engineers and stuff can do with underground piping and swords and things like that, to be able to get around that, I, everybody looks at that as such a hurdle, like, oh, they wouldn't really even be looking at this if they didn't feel that they had the engineering to be able to shut that water off, because that's the first thing we do when we look at a lot, you gotta shut the water off, or it is just gonna torch you.
Yeah, to be honest, I didn't think the state seemed, he didn't seem too concerned about the water.
No.
He's, he more, I think, said they have to have a plan for that, but you know, their engineers have to come up with a plan to divert this, like, or, you know, capture this water, do something with this water, make sure this water is not going here, there, and everywhere, but he did not seem that he thought that was an impossible task. That's my impression. If you disagree, certainly.
No, I, no, I agree.
That's the running water, and I won't, I won't debate it tonight, but that's the running water. But, but the wetlands themselves is entirely a separate topic.
But, but you know, they, as I even said, they said there now, the calculations that you have to do to manage your water is not like the 50-year storm, or it's a 100-year storm, which now is about every 10 years.
Right, no, I agree, but, completely agree.
Yeah, but I, I, I think their challenge with the narrowness of the road, that the intersection being just too close, too dangerous, every, you know, we had the meeting with everybody in town, and with all the neighbors and stuff, and they, I had a picture, went off to Dory after that, because I was sitting up here, and asked, well, how many of you have had accidents there? And almost everybody in the audience had their hand up.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, it's that dangerous, and, and I will not go through, like you say, I stopped, like, it turns green, and then I inch out and look, and I've done it before, and a car whips right by you.
Absolutely.
You know?
Yeah, no, great.
If you found the Athens Street, right, the primary entryway on this property, the length of Athens Street, taking a right and going down Appleton to Route 20, that particular section right there is not long enough or substantial enough to manage a backup from Route 20. It's gonna plug that whole neighborhood up, literally, and the house.
And life, life safety. You're gonna get fire apparatus up there, in and out, injuries, there's something bad going on. You're gonna get fire apparatus up there, in and out, injuries, if something bad going on up there, go, that's, that, that.
I, again, again, you know, but I know we're not gonna settle this issue tonight and we're gonna be spending lots of time talking about this in the near future.
I'll, I'll save some of the other comments.
But just so you're under, you know, I want everybody at home to know that there's a constant steady supply of information going in and out through the town hall. And people are constantly, literally constantly on this stuff. Forty B has been a very consuming amount of um time for the folks at the town hall here. So now going on to the last one is going back to um our friends over at Perry Place. We found out that they, and I don't have the details, I want to be clear about that, but they did appeal our comprehensive permit. So I don't have any understanding right now how or why.
Would, would you guys like copies of that?
But um, yeah, in a minute, please, thank you.
I, I can get, I, I have a copy on my desk.
So um, next Wednesday, we have a uh basically a Zoom meeting scheduled. Myself, a couple of people from the town, the attorney and the state housing appeals board. So we are gonna have a meeting early this week coming up, maybe Tuesday or Wednesday. They're still trying to work out the details. Because again, we're getting a seven day notice. I just found out about this yesterday afternoon at close of business, literally, that we have a a hearing scheduled for next Thursday. So we're scrambling to put all this correct information together first before we speak on it publicly. But I just want everybody to know that Perry Place is under appeal right now, so we'll take it from there and then we'll keep it already posted. So just for you aware of that. The last thing we have here, and I do not want to steal anyone's thunder, so I'm gonna leave it very simply is that we have worked on a comprehensive permitting guide for the town, for the um applica, this is gonna be for basically anybody that needs it. So what what I ask you to do is just take this home with you, check it out and read it, and then next month it will get a formal introduction once um Selectman Carpenter has completely signed off on. I don't want to take anybody's thunder and I don't want to reveal anything before it's actually gotten the, you know, um, the blessing from the the author of intent here, I suppose. So if you want to just go ahead and read through this and you can um give us any comments, concerns, additions, subtractions, and then we can go from there for next month.
So, Ms. Chairman, is this still in draft?
Hmm, I wouldn't call it in draft. I would just say it hasn't been introduced to the town yet and I don't want to steal anybody's thunder. So that's pretty much what it really comes down to.
Who are the authors?
So there was a a group of people that got together monthly over a few, about a six month period. We all put this together. Um, and it was actually at the request of Selectman Carpenter and um the vice chair, I'm sorry, I forget, Anne Kavanaugh, is that correct? I just want to make sure. I apologize if I didn't say that correctly.
I think that's right.
Correct, okay. Um, they had requested a subcommittee to explore ways that we could improve the response from the town side and from the committee side on forty B. So Selectman Carpenter was great. He came months, he's been here like all the rest, you know, showed up and we put all this together. But again, I like, want to make sure before um he gets the final say before we really introduce it, so.
That's good.
Okay.
Awesome. Good work.
Other than that, I think we're okay. Do I have a motion to, do we have any other new builders from anyone else here? Anyone else?
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if we were able to make any headway on um sending a note to the selectmen uh to recognize Larry Chacolo.
I believe that is in the works.
Okay.
So I did not get a chance to speak to, you see, nobody's here from the town. I think they're actually enjoying a breather because they knew it was gonna be a quiet meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and I I believe that um they may actually be enjoying a day off, one of them at least today. So I'll follow up with them, if not tomorrow, on Monday.
Okay, yeah, and not putting you on on the spot for it.
No, but I know it's under work.
I'm happy to join you if you, if if you need some support with it.
Oh, no, I think that, I think um that it was well received and they appreciated the idea.
Okay.
And do we want to vote on the uh two meetings a month?
I don't think we want to do that yet. I think we want to make sure because it may not come in.
Okay.
I want you all to be aware of it and consider it, and then you can talk to the fans at home and, you know, make sure the, you know.
It's doable.
It's doable for everyone, yeah.
And I, I think, let's see how it pans out, right? If we, if it ends up that one comes first and there's gonna be an overlap of two months, that's one thing.
Yeah.
Having two meetings that go late is one thing. I don't know that I'd want to go to two meetings a month if it was gonna be an overlap of two months. If it's gonna be eight months with the same two projects on the same track, then I think that's something we'd need to consider. But, you know what I mean? Let's see how the timing goes on those.
And again, we're looking for a couple of, we, we did receive a couple of applications.
Come join us, we're a fun group.
Please. Um, but we'd like to see, maybe if we got a law student out there, like I said, or a retired, who knows, maybe we got a retired judge at home that's bored, might want to come and have some fun with us.
Engineer too, I love that.
Engineer, yeah, absolutely. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to close.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.